Rather than have a little chat to be acquainted with one another. We're here to talk about the additional appropriation request from the commissioners for the building of the highway garage. A couple of things I just wanted to go over real quick. Wanted to talk about some of the numbers to date that we've spent. We've kicked around a couple of ideas here with the commissioners. I've done a little discussing, talking with Ron and Baum and Mr. Understrut. And came up with some figures. Current low bid is in a ballpark of $752,000. That's about $35.80 a square foot. We've spent approximately $25,000 in design fees and printing fees. $4,000 in appraisal fees for the lakes building. $3,500 for soil borings. $800 in filing fees. $33 spent to date that we won't get back, not including about $7,000 in CA fees that'll be sitting out there. Once the building's completed, that's not spent yet, that'll be, that'll be, have to be spent regardless. So, we're at $33,000 so far. Barton, I don't know if I'm missing any numbers, I'm maybe missing a few here and there, but ballpark wise, it's probably pretty close.
Yeah, you're too close.
Okay. Redesign, if we try to come in under $600,000, there'd be redesigned fee, if we did half the building at 10,500, right now it's at 21,000 square feet. At 70 by 300, redesigned, 10,500, 70 by 150, that cost per square foot, when Ron Baum could go up as much as $58 per square foot. So, compare apples to apples, that $21,000 square foot building would, $21,000 square foot building would now be $1.2 million, a difference of $466,000. That building at 10,500 square feet would cost us $609,000, not including 10,000 to 15,000 in redesign fees and printing fees, $800 in filing fees. Prevailing wage would increase, could increase by 7 to 10%. Right now, we're on the AEC non-union scale, so we're probably at the best wage scale we can be at. The phased option could add the following costs as well, still have the 10,000 to 15,000 dollar design fees, printing fees, $800 in filing fees, prevailing wage could increase again by 7 to 10%. The construction costs could go up as much as 40,000 to 50,000 dollars in additional construction costs, 15 to 20% in additional shipping fees for steel, and the price of steel could or could not go up, could just stay the same, but that's something we need to think about plus, we're not taking into consideration any other contractors, electrical trades, HVAC, and so forth. So, I just wanted to throw it out there that, you know, we've spent as a county $33,000 on this so far. That $33,000 would pretty much be for not, and we'll be adding additional fees to this as well too, if we can't make a decision tonight. Anybody from the council want to comment on that? You know, we've had, we've had, this is our third meeting, not heard a lot of solutions provided, I've heard a lot of no. It'd be nice to get some kind of solution or idea thrown out there. You know, we talked at the last meeting, Mark, I asked you twice, and you said both times that if we could get money out of the highway fund, that you could be afford it. Well, we've got an additional request here for $182,000, and we need to figure out something to do.
I'll make a motion, that, strong vote, we take, yes, we do want to spend more money than the $600,000 allotted, no, we do not. And that'll save a lot of time. So, I think this is what we should do first.
Well, before we do that, we have some people in the audience that are here that I would like to hear from them, hear their thoughts of their taxpayers and so forth, and I want to hear what they have to say.
Or could we ask for a second first, and then we open up for discussion?
Fine.
Okay. All set.
Motion is seconded. Now, I'd like to open up for discussion to anybody that would like to address the situation, that would like to put their two cents worth, and I'd be very interested to hear what US taxpayers have to say on this matter. We have some of you at Mojave Garage here. I'd love to hear what you guys have to say about this.
Well, I'll get it up.
We've spent over a year.
Could you please introduce yourself?
My name's Leroy Lingle.
Thank you.
I live at 2568 South County Road 200 East, and I am a taxpayer. And you spent over a year and over $30,000, and now you're wanting to vote yes or no? Does that make sense? I mean, so that, you're just saying if everybody votes no, you've just wasted that $30,000 of my tax money? Is that what you're saying?
We didn't really waste it, we came up with a...
If you don't build the building, it's a waste, right?
We didn't determine which way we want to go.
If you say no on spending more than $600,000, you've basically wasted the $30,000 that you've already spent. Is that true? Because you'll have to start from scratch.
No.
Now, does that mean another 17 months?
No, no, no. He, all he has to do is spend additional $10,000 roughly to update the drawings, so the drawings just had to be...
An additional fees.
So, additional $10,000 in fees and all this?
10 to 15.
10 to 15.
10 to 15,000 dollars on top of the 30-some thousand you've already spent.
Prevailing wage could or could not go up.
So, that seems kind of ridiculous to me.
Well...
I mean, the money's there, the building needs to be replaced, your own firm said it needed to be replaced. What seems to be the problem?
Well, I'm only one vote, so...
Well, I mean...
I'm addressing everybody here.
Okay, everybody, what seems to be the problem?
I think the building's too big, Lingle, for the, for what they, down here for the building. And I'm not, and I'm, and I, I'll just tell you, I'm going to vote down, and you can say whatever you want to.
Yeah.
I'm not adding no more money to this project.
Okay. So, you're basically saying no, let it fall down, and we're wasting our $30,000?
I'm not saying it.
That's what it sounds like to me?
We, we approved $600,000.
Okay.
They knew how much money they had. You could go to your engineer and say, this is the amount of money I got, I don't want to spend a dime more, that wasn't done.
Okay. So, you're going to build us a smaller building than what we got?
I don't know what you're going, I don't know what they're going to build, I don't know.
You don't know? Or are you just going to patch what's there?
I really don't know.
But I've, I've had a lot of people tell me, they can see no reason to spend that kind of money on a highway garage.
Yeah, okay.
It's their tax money, I'm just doing what they're telling me.
Well, it's my tax money too.
Yeah.
So, and you've got all that equipment down there now, it's underneath that old building, that's getting ready to fall down, so, you know, we're just going to park all the equipment outside and let it rust and...
No, go ahead and fix the other ones in there.
Okay. And you've got $600,000, that'd do a lot of repair.
I think we've, we've talked, again, this project is, we've talked about it a year, but in fact, it was first discussed late 2012, with the idea that, you know, something needs to be done. And again, we've had, we've had construction firm after engineering firms, et cetera, tell us that it's, it is unsafe, it's a potential liability issue, and yet, we've, we have not been able to move forward, for whatever reason. And I, you know, I think there's every single person in this, on this council, the commissioners, everybody that's been involved, from the engineers to the architects and what have you. We've had the experts tell us that the damage was too much, it was too great to repair, we were just pouring good money after bad, instead of getting a building that would house all of our new equipment. You know, nobody wants to spend an additional $182,000, but the fact that we've already delayed it this long, had we been able to get it done early in 2013, the, it probably could have cost a lot less. We sat here several months ago, and the commissioners agreed after several on this council gave them instructions to go and make an offer on Fuzzy's building. Then we turned around, and the commissioners were ready to go and ask us for the money to do that, and we turned them down. So, you know, we just wasted a lot, a great deal of time and effort by a lot of people, could have had for $100,000, less than the $600,000. But we said, no, that wasn't the right thing. It's our duty as elected council to do the right thing for the taxpayers, that it's going to last in the future, for the longest time. You know, why invest something that is just going to continue to deteriorate? We've got the new trucks that cost a lot of money, and we invested in that, and we're not doing what's right for the taxpayers in my mind, to let them sit out there and rust and deteriorate. And asking the county employees to go work in a, in a potential dangerous situation, you know, this has gone on for quite some time. To go back and now and cut the building in half, those drawings have been, how long have we had the drawings submitted, before we submitted them for, for bids? You know, then was the time to say, hey, it's too big, before we asked for the money. But, you know, I think there wasn't, there was not one contractor that bid on this that, that was not aware of the budget.
Well, you say it's been going on for a long time, it has been going on for a long time. Years ago, the council was approached by Mr. Price to get money to get some new poles to secure that building down there. Mr. Barker, you were on the council at that time, you refused to give money to take the building off jacks. This building right day today, right now, is more secure than it was then. And I'd like to know why it was ignored way back then.
It wasn't ignored, the building is past repair.
No, no, no.
But, Mr. Plumb, now you want me to answer?
Okay, I'm saying the building was sitting on jacks back then, and you wouldn't even give money to go buy poles. Why?
But, the poles would not solve the problem, Mr. Plumb. The building is shot, it's not just the poles is the problem, the rafters are even rotting through. We, after you wanted me to go down there and repair that building, Jim Wolf had Miles Rizman come down, give some price for putting on the poles. We had a structural engineer come in and tell you, poles is not going to solve the problem, the building is past repair, it's not safe to be, and you need to get a new building.
That was not the question I asked. The question I asked, why did you not appropriate money to the highway, no, to the highway garage years ago, when you were on council, to go and buy poles to get that building fixed, to get it off jacks?
I'm going to tell you one more time, Mr. Plumb, because putting new poles in there and getting rid of the jacks is not going to solve the problem.
We weren't even talking about the poles and all that stuff way back then, so...
And your old firm went down there, and you said in a public meeting, your firm went down there, and you should have condemned the building.
My engineer, not me, my engineer.
Well, do you believe what your engineer said?
Yes, I do.
All right. And then when you went down, two or three years ago, the building should have been condemned by your own words.
Mm-hmm. And we, and we started coming up with an idea, and we, and we came up with a design to go on and start getting it done, and Flatterman started doing that work, and then, of course, then he would let go, and then it all stopped. And he left go, and he, when he walked away, it was sitting on jacks.
Right.
Okay.
Councilman Flynn, with all the respect, and that's in the past, and we can't, we can't go back and change the past.
I know, but we got to look into the past to see where we want to go into the future.
We got a councilman, now being councilman inside out, that were commissioners as well, so we could point the fingers at them, and go back even further.
Yes, we can.
And it's not going to do any good here, it's not going to serve any purpose. We need to deal with the problem today.
Okay, that's why...
We're stepping over a dime to pick up a penny.
That's why I made the motion like I did. Then we can decide which way we want to go. If we decide to appropriate more money, okay, we can do it. If we decide to stay under $600,000, we got to figure out how we're going to get to that point. So, that's where I'm at.
In reality, my way of thinking, from being the highway supervisor previously, the only thing that I had looked at back in the past, is we take down the pole bar, leave the standing structure that's administrative and the garage itself, and we were going to replace the open pole bar, add it on down to the, to the property line, and widen it at the time, and we were never able to get that off the ground. And my point, that's all we really need to worry about, is that building that's structurally weak. And all I keep hearing is we've got a liability issue, and yet, Mr. Lingle already says, we've got equipment and stuff parked underneath the building. Nobody's concerned about that, there's a liability issue, you got guys walking around. It can be all parked outside. You know, I, I don't get the, on one hand, you're a crying wolf, on the other hand, you're standing this, that, and the other. Is it really that dangerous? Well, if it is, shouldn't be a thing parked underneath of it.
Well, to, to address your point of just taking the pole bar and the truck shed off, and the rest of it is fine, that is not true. The, the shop and the office building is also deteriorating, and it needs to come down too. By the, the engineer's report that we had to go get? You can't, you can't just take that, the open end shed off and leave the rest, because it's, it's not, it's not in good shape either. It needs to, it needs to come down.
You know, I think the one thing that all of us can agree on is we don't want to build a building just to build a building. It's not, we're here for, it's not to just build a building and there we go. It's to do what's right by the taxpayers. This county has a history of, I'm sorry, half-assing everything they do. I mean, we just replaced the steps, why wasn't that addressed years ago when the building was built? There's other problems at the courthouse that weren't, haven't been addressed, and we're paying for it as taxpayers. Why are we doing that? Because we don't address these things when they come head on. So, we're proposing band-aiding this building together, that we're just going to have to fix again five years down the road. You know, instead of fixing it right, nobody wants to spend the money, nobody wants to do it. I don't want to spend the money. But, you know, to do it right and be done with it, finally start doing things right in this county, would be a nice, refreshing step, as far as I'm concerned. And everybody's got their own personal feelings on this, I just want to do what's right by the taxpayer, and it's, it's not trying to spend every dime that we can, it's spend the dime wisely. And I don't think we're spending it wisely if we're going to build a building that's too small, we've got building equipment sitting out. Mark, you've talked about your equipment, I'm not a farmer, I don't know, I mean, combines can't be cheap, you know, and I'm sure that the wear, the weather, and Mark, you, you know, like I do, like Mark knows, that stuff's not cheap. And if you could keep it sheltered, if you had your choice, I'm sure you would do it. And I think that's what we're trying to do. The funds are available, either through the highway or the CumCap Fund, they can't be used for anything else but this purpose, we can't use it for razors, we can't use it for anything but this purpose, and that's the purpose alone. And it does get replenished at almost $150,000 a year. In a few years, they'll be replaced and done. We're in pretty decent shape as far as our county buildings go, the courthouse is in pretty good shape, the sheriff's department, you know, is in pretty, the jail's in pretty good shape, and other buildings are in pretty good shape. I know we're kind of rolling the dice, it's a big chunk of change we're asking to spend, that the commissioners are asking for, but I think it's prudent we do the right thing, and not, like I said earlier, step over a dime to pick up a penny. That we, whatever personal feelings we have, we put on the side, and we, we think about the people that are working there, the taxpayers, and try to do the right thing.
I think additionally, you know, this isn't, we did approve the $600,000, so we're looking to approve an additional $182,000, if that's the way that the vote goes and what have you. But, you know, this is just not an expense or something that we're going to throw the money out, it is an investment. I mean, it's a, it would be an asset that would last many years into the future. I think, you know, right or wrong, when the decision was made to upgrade this courthouse, it was an investment in our county, and it was an investment to last well into the future, so that, I believe that the intention was, so it didn't have to be, continue to be piecemealed, but we do have an obligation to keep it updated as, as issues come up. But I believe that a highway garage should be something we should be proud of. Mark, you've made the statement many times, you know, we need to be able to take pride in a building like that, and, and keep the equipment put away where it belongs, and under roof, so it is protected from the weather. But I, I, I think it should be, if it's done correctly, and we certainly had input from all the right people when the plans were drawn up. We knew the budget then, we didn't ask the contractors to overbid it, we asked them to tell, tell us what it took to build whatever one agreed we needed. To go back now and start over, it's just pouring more money down the drain. You know, there's cost of living increase, or, you know, inflation, we've already, this is the third year, again, this has been under discussion. Every year, it costs more.
Well, I got a question to ask, and I'll stand up if you want me to.
Please.
I know who I am. And my granddaughter's a fairy queen, I'm damn proud of her. Okay, I'm Paul Henry, 3389 North Henry Road. Now, I'm kind of new to what's going on, except what I read in the paper. But there's a fund that that $600, or $600,000 is going to come out of it, it's a building fund, and then there's some...
Yes.
Okay, how much money is in that fund?
Almost $2 million dollars, or a little over a million.
What are you going to do with what's left of it after $600,000?
Good question.
Well, build a new garage, and quit, put the personal rent debt away and build it. I pay as much taxes, not as much as some people, but I pay a lot of taxes, it's hard to come up with. I say build a building.
Thank you.
Out of, out of the building fund, not out of that, road maintenance or any other fund, out of the building fund.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, I'm proud of you.
You should be.
Rick Isaac, 638 West Dent Street. And in 1998, when I started this woman down at the highway department, Howard Price took me around the garage, posts were rotting off then. You got $1 million, if you want to take $600,000 up, you got capstone you need to fix over at the courthouse, you got an elevator that you need repaired. You pull that $600,000 out, and we were going to come up with this, you say $150,000 a year, and we're not pulling that kind of money. I mean, you may be able to do it, I'd like to see it. I mean, we seen, we either don't have money or we do have money. But Jim looked at this, and could have got it down between $150,000 and $200,000 to replace that down there. When Mark went down there and looked at it, that building was going to be taken completely out and extended 100 foot. Nobody wanted to listen to it, Howard Price couldn't get a paperclip approved of, and that's fact. And these people, these people in here are the ones who play in politics. That's what this is all about. A highway garage, are we building buildings, or are we building roads? What kind of a highway program have you had in the past three years? 550, 550 West and Gabbard Road? We done 28 miles between 40 and 50 miles of chip seal here. You get these guys out of the garage, you get it down, if they don't stop the convenience store first. I mean, you guys, you guys need to take a look at what's going on. And when I was out of work, and I've been out of work due to some of you guys, when I was out of work, I couldn't go out and buy new stuff, I had to patch up what I had. Now, you're going to take, you're going to take every dime, you take that $100,000 out of that CumCap fund, but you're going to take every dime, and you've got other things coming down the road, you don't know what's going to happen. And it is your responsibility to take care of the taxpayers, and that's to spend our money wisely. And you fix that building by putting the post back in it and wait, they come down there and took three bays out of that and put cars in from the sheriff's office. We couldn't even park, we couldn't even park vehicles in there. I've been down there when we plugged the graders in, Howard asking for help down there, we couldn't even get a building put up that we had the, the half-trust one, that was built when, when Tom Flatterman was down there, put on the back of the building. We was going to put it up with telephone poles, we did put telephone poles into hold that up, and that building's never been condemned, never. And I'm, I'm telling you right now, that as, as a taxpayer, and we all pay proportionally, mind you, as a taxpayer, you need to be looking at how you're spending your money. You spring, we don't have any money. How can we not have any money, you guys turn around and spend money like this, this is absolutely insane. When you can fix that, until we can get it back in there, you get 10 years out of that building, and if we're in better shape than what's that, and these other factories come in, we may be able to do something. But we have a declining population. People aren't paying, look, look how many taxes aren't, how many people aren't paying their property taxes. And then you've got your highway fund sitting on $2 million down there, and you can't get roads paved, you can't, you know, they're out chip sealing anybody, you're chip sealing. It ju, it just doesn't make any sense. We put, we elect you people in there because we want you to do something, and do it right, and take care of, of your constituents, but do you? How do you think people on fixed income are making this? I mean, they just wait around so that people who can come and take their houses away from them come and get them. It doesn't make a lick of sense. And I'm telling you, this, this highway budget's been the healthiest budget's been in here. It's rolled over around 100, a million and a half just about every year, even when you guys let me go, there was a million and a half rolled over. And it was all a big story about we don't have any money. I mean, you know, I know how you guys play the game, I've been in the middle of it. I've been in the middle of it for 15 years, and it's, and I'll tell you, it turns my stomach on some of the things you guys do. So, you want to build your building, vote for it and build your building, but you're going to still hear from me, you'll hear from me in public meetings, you'll hear from me in the newspaper, I guarantee it.
You said that was, Mr. Wolf got an appraisal for about 100 to 200,000?
To have, have the posts put back in.
Okay. And somebody else had an appraisal for how much? You said there was another?
When Mark Plumb came down there...
How much?
I don't even want that one, the drawing to go out and take care of that building that had 100, 100 feet on it, but when Tom Flatterman was down there.
Okay, so what you're basically saying is if we had acted on this a lot sooner, it would have cost us a lot less money?
No, what I'm saying...
So, we're kicking the can down, it's a costly one.
No, no good words in my mouth.
That's what you said.
I said, what I'm saying is, if you guys want to spend that money down there for that, and you don't want to repair that building when there was other opportunities to do it, at a time that we don't have the money, if that's what you want to do, proceed.
We're trying to tell you that the CumCap Fund is independent, and it does have the money for it.
Yeah, and you're going to pull all that money out of it?
No.
Well, according to Mr. Henry, where he wants to use the money from, we would...
CumCap Fund.
We would be willing to hunt 800,000.
You're right.
We only have 200,000 left.
And if we'd acted on this sooner, it would have been a lot less money.
Just like these steps out here, I assume, and the elevator, the caps on the jail, I don't even know what, you have a quote on that, don't you, the caps, that they got to reseal those caps on the jail? What's that? You haven't got a check?
Yeah, I mean, that's just it, it's, we, we keep delaying this, it keeps costing us more money. If we just act on it and get it done, I mean, that's what, that's what he's saying, is if we, if we'd acted on this years ago, we may not be in this situation, but we have, we haven't acted on it, we've waited. Whether we're repairing the building, whether we're doing this, whether we're doing that...
What I'm saying is, if you would repair that building, put the posts in it now, and set on your hands until we get some money, then we may be able to do something. I'm not advocating...
We've been told by a structural engineer that that is not cost-effective.
Yeah.
And that's an engineer, that's an outside independent firm out of Indianapolis, that's nobody here local, that's not a council member, that's not a commissioner, that's an outside engineering firm that I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell them.
Building and said he could redo this for, for between $150,000 and $200,000.
Is he a structural engineer?
I don't know one way you had to talk to Jim.
No, he wasn't. You got to go in the words of a structural engineer, somebody that's got, that's got liability, that's got something that, some meat in this, uh... We, we can't.
I, I, evidently you're talking to different people than I'm talking to, and I talk to towns of, I don't know anybody that wants this. So, I, like I said, you know, you guys continue on, you'll hear from me, continue.
Mr. Isaac will hear from me no matter what.
That's exactly right.
You're, you're, you have very, you have very good articles, you're very articulate, and I would recommend the paper hire you, because you have very good writing.
I don't want to work with paper.
Okay.
I want to make sure you guys do your job.
Dan, thank you. Is there any further discussion from anybody in the audience? From the council? We have a motion on the floor?
I might have one quick question.
I might have one quick question, Mr. President. I'm going to direct this toward Jay Havland. Jay, this is not intended to put you on the spot.
Go ahead, don't bother. I'll hurt my feelings though. 14 days.
14 days. The request that we're here to consider tonight is to additionally appropriate 182,500 dollars out of our MVH fund to supplement what we've already appropriated out of QM cap to get this building project done. Now, the, according to this request that I've gotten here, the estimated revenue for this year for the MVH is 650,000 dollars. Now, if we took 182,500 out of that, the MVH fund to, to build this building project, would that hamper you in any way of completing the, the highway repair and the work that you have to do for the rest of the year?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong on this Debbie, we were taking this out of the extra money coming in this year through MVH because I think we've got over 200,000 more than what we estimated for this year from the state.
I know that we did, we, we are getting some extra money that we didn't get before. I know that.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what taking out of that will do to next year's budget when the state goes over it and checks it. I don't know. So I'm not that good on the budgets. I can, I can track them, I can, I can follow the money, estimate the money, but when they go to, when the state goes to approve a budget, they go by how much you have left, don't they Debbie? And then they, they fix, they fix your budget budget on that.
Last six months of this year and what you'll have come in for the next, for the, for all of 2025.
But the way it's going right now, we're doing pretty good.
So even, are you saying that no, this will not prevent you from continuing your chip and seal program?
No, no, no. We've got the money there for our chip seal and all that.
Okay.
And if maybe as you brought up the chip seal, I got something I want to say. I don't know where you got your figures at. I pulled all the annual reports to clear back to 2006 and every year we exceeded what was done, but since, since I've been down there, by 10 miles a year. And if you want to look at the figures, I got them right here, you can look at.
I'd like to look at them. I was there too.
But, because I, I went back and checked all of them, the ones that are signed by Howard, the one that was signed by Chad Lee when he filled in after Tom go for a while and the ones we did. We're actually 10 miles over what we were doing every year. We're going to be a little short this year because we've got 100,000, we've got 100,000 knocked up on.
Okay, you've done 28 miles for a one year.
Yep.
Of, of Pug Road.
No, 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 we're chip sealed.
Oh, yeah.
We haven't had, we haven't had the extra money to the Pug.
You're right, you haven't done any Pug.
We done Pug on Frisk Drive-In Road and Gabbard Road, the only one we've done.
2010.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, that, that would have been 11.
2011, you're correct.
But as far as chip seal, we've exceeded all of it on chip seal.
Well, you should have. We, that's all you did. You don't, you don't Pug. We, we done between 40 and 50 miles of chip seal. I was on the chip box.
I understand that Rick, but we're doing what we can do. Like, like this year, we're 100,000 short on everything.
Where's the Pug being? Where's, where's, where's the paver and how many miles are you going to pave?
This year, none, because the money ain't there.
You just said you had money in the end.
This is MVH's pay that we don't have.
Well, you either got money or you don't have money. I don't understand what's going on. MVH pays for salaries, it pays for equipment and it pays for bills and things. It's not just for roads.
Your chip seals and everything comes out of your local roads and streets.
Comes out of local roads and streets and that's what I want Dale to understand. That's where most of his paving money is coming from. The MVH pays all the bills, all their salaries, all their fuel bills, all the rest of that stuff. That's where the money goes from the MVH.
There was almost 200,000 dollars cut out of my paving money out of local roads and street this year. And that's why we're going to Pug this year.
Gentlemen, we're off topic, we're off topic. I know, I know it's an emotional thing and there's a lot of feelings on this. I respect and I appreciate everybody's opinion, but, you know, we're here for the additional appropriation and so forth. There's, you're either fiercely for it or you're fiercely against it. I understand that. There's probably not really a middle ground on this one. Jay, do you have anything else? No, thank you.
Thanks for your patience, Jay.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Phong, if you'd restate your motion please?
My motion is to, do we or do we not want to spend more than 600,000 dollars if there's more we appropriate? If you want to spend more, you will vote yes. If you do not want to spend any more, you will vote no.
I think that's kind of open because we're asking for the additional and the 600,000 we could still go back to the QM cap fund, so I think you need to specify if you would because we could, it's, we're, this is what's on the table right now, the additional appropriation.
I made a motion, I, that's not what I made a motion on.
This is what we're here for, this is what the meeting is for tonight, for the additional appropriation.
I didn't, I didn't, my motion was not.
I know, that's why I'm trying to clarify that with you.
Well, you want to do that.
You probably need to clarify your motion to, to address the additional appropriation. I don't think we're addressing that. You're saying 600,000 dollars, but we could still go back to QM cap fund, but we're talking about this.
His motion was for a straw bill.
Mine was for a straw bill to see if we want to spend more than 600,000.
So.
And if we do, then we would address where we get this money from. That's the way I'm looking at it. That's what I see. If we don't, then we don't even worry about this.
Okay, let's see what you said.
Okay.
I, I, I understand what you're saying now, Mark.
Okay.
That's a little bit of a trick question.
Well, because, well, what I'm saying, if we, if we want to spend more than 600, then, then we will have to decide where we're going to get the money from. If we don't want to spend more than 600, we're going to see how, what we're going to get for our money. That's what we're going to have to determine how, how we want to adjust these plans to get, what we, get the most we can get for 600,000. That's where I'm at.
I just wanted to make sure we were leaving this additional out there, but you're, I see you're just doing that.
Yeah, I just, I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't think anyone here on this council really wants to spend any more money than they have to. I don't like to spend this money, don't, really don't want to spend anymore, but just like I, Paul Henry and I was talking earlier today, you go up to Maggie's Restaurant and tell her you want a big breakfast for a dollar and she says, no, her breakfast is 5.95. If you want the dollar menu, you go over to McDonald's, you know? It's real easy for us to say, well, we, we won't want a garage of this size and we're only going to give you 600,000 for it and no contractor's willing to do that, then you're either going to do without or you're going to come up with the extra money.
Well, you got to go. You got to go.
You, you don't have much money you have in your pocket when you go to it.
Yeah, and you know what the price is. You know, when you go to Maggie's, it's going to cost you so much, you know it.
You ain't got the money, you don't go.
You don't go to Maggie's.
Not that Maggie's is expensive, mind you.
No, it's, no, it's not. Don't Maggie, leave it.
It's good food.
Very good food, good price.
Just wanted to clarify that. So we don't get in trouble.
Nothing else, Maggie's got some free everything.
There you go. Go to Maggie's for a good meal.
That's right, that's right.
And her other establishments, I don't want to leave anybody out. You're completely correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for a roll call vote for if we want to spend more than 600,000 dollars, you vote affirmative. If you don't, then vote no.
That's right.
Okay.
What, before we go, one more question. Is it possible that assuming, depending upon what the vote, whether we do or don't want to spend greater than, than the 600,000, but there is also the possibility that there could be a compromise between spending it between the building fund and the, and the highway fund, the motor vehicle fund. So it doesn't, wouldn't have to necessarily be all in one or jeopardize. Again, we could probably have 10 different ideas about the best way to proceed, including cutting down the building.
Did you call, Mr. President?
Councilman Winter.
For what? For what?
What truly is just the rest? And I don't think we've got a motion for, we've got a second.
She was saying take some from one and some from another?
That's what she was saying.
You can't do now.
You can't do that now.
No, you can't do that now.
So with what she said, do you want, does that make you want to change anything in your motion or you don't want to leave it the same?
No.
Okay. It stays the same.
Councilman Winter.
No, correction, Mr. Winter, the president is last, he's a tiebreaker vote.
No, he isn't.
Not a, not a roll call.
No, on city council, the mayor is a tiebreaker vote. He is an elected county official and he can't vote.
Okay, go on.
Councilman Winter.
Yes.
Councilman Strong.
Yes.
Councilman Wolf.
No.
Councilman Si Now.
No.
Councilwoman Wise.
Yes.
Councilman Flann.
No.
Councilman Nobby.
No.
Motion carried, rose up.
See now, all three of them are just leaving and I have ways.
Misseners?
I like to talk about how, how they're going now. Because they're ridiculous on what they've got in this design. They're asking more in this design than what the state has right now.
No, it's not even, it's not even our place. I mean, I would suggest if you want to talk to the design, set up a meeting and meet with them individually.
Okay.
I mean, that would, that would be the place.
That's fine. Now, he though, I can't tell him what to do. He will not allow me to tell him what to do. So that's, it's a dead issue. Okay.
Anybody else in the audience have anything to say? We're, here we're all gathered. Okay.
But I would like to make a few statements about this building before we leave it, just, just to put it on record. I know the supervisor at the highway garage over in Shugerville, he has four bay garage to work on his vehicles. He does not even have enough building to get all his vehicles and stuff inside. That's the state. The highway garage at 40 and 1, I took a tour, I talked to the superintendent up there, they have a five bay garage to work on vehicles plus one bay to work on smaller vehicles like pickup trucks or whatever. They made the statement they would never build another facility like that ever again. They spent way too much money up there, way too much money. And here we are, as poor as we are, and we want a five bay garage to work on vehicles plus the storage? I think we're, we're, and we're a broke county. How can we even afford to think about doing what the state, and the state will never do what they did again? And we're trying to do what they did.
Well, can I, can I, Mark?
Yes, we are, sure, sure.
Mark, they built an architectural wonder up there with, with probably 20 corners and angles. You know, this is a nice practical building. We can all argue about the number of bays.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying we need to cut it back pretty much a month.
Well.
And that's what I'm saying right now.
The difference in cost between what we want to do and the monstrosity there at 40 and 1, there's no comparison. Now, you know, what you're going to put inside, yes, people could argue, what do you want to do? But I think we also, we want space to put the new vehicles under roof.
The vehicles don't sit under roof most of the time in the summertime. The 17 and a half years I was the highway supervisor, even though we had room in there, during the summer months, most of the equipment sat outside. The only time they were really, the dump trucks and things were undercover was in the wintertime and so they could be plugged in and salt sand wouldn't be exposed to the weather so much. That's what we used the building for. During the summer months, I worked at Harvest Land. All our semi's sit outside all year round. I mean, and you, most of the farmers don't have, you know, to put everything under roof. They put their valuables and things that they don't use during the season under roof if they can. The winter, the summer equipment needs to have a place to park in the wintertime. I agree with that. But you're saying these dump trucks are going to rust if they sit outside. That's what they're built for, sit outside.
No, we didn't say that they were, and, and again, you know, in the wintertime where you can put them under roof.
That's what we're for. Well, I keep hearing they need to be under the roof 24/7.
I don't, I didn't intend to.
At this point, everybody, it's a moot point. The commissioners are going to have to figure out what they're going to do at this point. So there's nothing really to further discuss about it. It's been decided upon. There's no further discussion, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.